I'd like to call it a quarter, the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Tuesday, October 26, 2021. The time is 3:38. This meeting may also be accessible accessed through Zoom at the link that we've provided on our website or by calling the number we've provided on our website as well. First, I'll start with roll call. Councilmember Abersold.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Councilmember Farnich.
Here.
Councilmember Heims.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
And this is Mayor Kuhn. And from staff, we have interim city clerk Josh Stecker.
Here.
Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Here.
Senior Planner Carl DeCemus.
Here.
And thank you. And with that, we're discussions. Our 2024 and 2044 population targets and our second discussion will be temporary suspension of special use provision and encroachment permits. And a third topic will be, is it growth allocate? No, UGA. UGA. And with that, I will turn it over to Community Development, Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Today, our first topic is our population growth targets for 2024 to 2044, which are a predecessor to our 2024 comprehensive plan update that is forthcoming. Just want to give a brief, very brief overview before turning it over to Principal Planner Carl DeCemus, who has drafted a white paper that hopefully you've had a chance to read. We want to briefly go over some of that and then lead the council through a discussion. Why is this important and why are we here? As we know, the city has experienced rather rapid growth over the last 10 years. And part of comprehensive planning is considering our capacity that we have within the city to accommodate population and employment, although today we're focusing on population as well as considering the demand or what we're expecting to grow over that period and how we can do that in a way that is consistent with Gig Harbor's vision for its future. As Carl will explain, there's many things that go into this, but what we need to do is look at what happened in the past and how did we grow the way that we did and why, which Carl has analyzed and will discuss further with you, Council. But largely, largely, we grew the way that we did based on decisions that were made by the city, such as large development agreements and planned residential developments. And Carl will explain those numbers that are in the white paper. As most of you know, in 2018, there was a moratorium on certain developments as the city looked at development regulations in order to address growth. Many code changes were made during that time that will prevent the level of growth and the type of growth that happened during the previous 10-year period. Within the white paper, staff also compared our demanding capacity, as I mentioned. And again, this is to put forward the best professional analysis for a fair, consistent and defendable growth rate over the next 20 years that we will plan for. There are some additional considerations besides a growth rate that we're requesting. One of, some of those include the Pierce County urban growth area. We know that it's not just the city that's developing, but we have areas around us, both in the urban growth area as well as the rural area that are developing. And how can we look at that? And then additionally, staff during the next year or during the comp plan would like to look at code and comprehensive plan policies and regulations to not prevent from what have, prevent what happened from happening again, but we need to have some additional checks and balances that are very typical in other jurisdictional codes and comp plans. So that, for instance, if a developer comes into council and says, I want a development agreement for X amount of units, there's a codified check that staff will look at, well, what is our demand? Do we have any left to give? And if we don't, then we cannot accept that development agreement because it would be inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. So again, Carl will go over a lot of these numbers and, and the process, but really overarching, the city did grow at a faster rate than was anticipated. A lot of that is largely due to development agreements that were passed and that were developed during this past 10-year period. Again, staff would like to have a fair, consistent and defendable growth rate for our next comprehensive plan update. And then again, there's some additional items that we would like to address post-growth rate discussion, including coordination with the Pierce County urban growth area and looking at code and comprehensive plan policies to ensure that proper checks and balances for future growth are there. And with that, I will turn it over to Carl.
Okay, thank you, Katrina.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So do you want to present everything? Are we jumping in or is Carl going to give a presentation and then we'll circle back and jump in?
I have a, I have a brief presentation, Councilmember Farnich, and then I think after that we could kind of open it up for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so today, thank you very much. So today, we have brought to you a staff memo related to population growth target allocations. And as I'm reading through this, you should be able to follow along sort of page by page. And I'll let you know when I get onto the, onto the next page. So you'll be able to follow the numbers and the tables as I move through the, as I move through the presentation. The Central Puget Sound region has experienced unprecedented growth over the last 10 years. According to the 2020 census, that growth amounts to approximately 600,000 people. Most of the growth occurred in Seattle and King County, but Pierce County saw its fair share as well, 126,000 people. Gig Harbor's cut of this growth share amounted to nearly 5,000 people. Unprecedented is an understatement in our community's case. As most of you know, our state does employ a law or set of laws that seeks to manage population growth in a way that attempts to monitor growth over time, lessen the impacts of growth on our rural agricultural and natural or open spaces, and slow urban expansion or sprawl. This is known as the Growth Management Act. The GMA is managed by the State Department of Commerce, who provides guidance and ensures that our, that for jurisdictions fully planning under the act, their comprehensive plans are consistent with the law. Pierce County is also part of the Puget Sound region, a four-county area made up of Snohomish, King, Pierce, and Kitsap counties. These counties are also subject to the goals and policies spelled out by a regional plan known as VISION. VISION is developed and managed by the Puget Sound Regional Council, a regional planning organization made up of representatives from the member jurisdictions within the Puget Sound region, with staff that administer the plan and review and certify the member jurisdictions' comprehensive plans. The GMA stipulates that city, that cities review its comprehensive plan at least every eight years. The city is required to complete this next update on or before June 30, 2024. As part of this process, the county, in accordance with VISION 2050, the most recent version of VISION, must allocate growth share amongst the jurisdictions, including both rural and urban unincorporated areas. Page two. VISION's regional growth strategy provides the population growth allocations to the four counties for a 20-year planning period. As you can see on Table 1, Pierce County has been allocated 264,784 people over the 2020-2044 planning period. That number is aggregated by percentage to what are called regional geographies. Gig Harbor is part of the Cities and Towns regional geography. Geography is allotted 7% of the total Pierce County population growth share, which amounts to 18,535 people. Table 2 provides a breakdown of the population growth targets chosen by each jurisdiction. Gig Harbor has yet to submit a number. Gig Harbor has, and that is the reason we are here today, whoops, to decide what we think growth will look like over the next 20-year planning period. Moving on to page three. The growth allocation process goes back as far as 1992, when the city's projected total population for 2012 was 5,672. According to the 2020 census, our total population as of 2020 is 12,029. Note the overlap in Table 3 relative to the successive planning cycles. This is due to the fact that depending on state law, the planning cycle is reset and a new 20-year planning horizon is introduced. In other words, a new planning period begins and an analysis and assessment of what happened over the past five to eight years is now undertaken by each county and each jurisdiction within it. That crossroads is where we are right now. Looking at how and why the city grew in the manner it did and what direction we'd like to steer towards for the next eight or so years. Moving to page four. As I said previously, the city experienced unprecedented growth over the past decade, and now we're asked to look forward and predict the next period. But before we do that, we have to ask the why question. Why did we grow so much so quickly? Staff has spent time thinking about this and discussing it with the Planning and Building Committee, the mayor, and others. It appears that past decisions led to this growth by way of implementing several mechanisms into the code that would allow for accelerated growth. For instance, entering into development agreements leading to McCormick Creek, 189 dwellings, and Harbor Hill, 998 dwellings, which includes Herenskey and the Bressera Apartments. Both subdivisions are also planned residential developments allowing for greater density. The city allowed for smaller lot sizes, required minimum densities, both contributing to more dense development. Harbor Hill's contribution to growth in the city cannot be understated. As noted in the figures on page four, if we assume a 2.2 persons per household citywide average, Harbor Hill accounts for 2,196 people. Given that the city's population change from 2010 to 2020 was approximately 5,000 people, this alone would account for over a third of the growth the city experienced. If the Harbor Hill development and planned residential development had never occurred, the city would be under its total population target of 10,500 for the 2030 planning period by nearly 1,000 people. As council knows, the city has already made inroads to eliminate provisions that would allow for such a development to be proposed in the future. Under current code, Harbor Hill and many of the other developments listed on pages four and five would likely not be able to develop in the same manner. Moving to page five. In order to take a realistic and defensible view of the city's future plan for growth, we have to take, we have to take what we know about the past, analyze what we have in the present, and predict what we think about the future. One of the ways we do that is to look at the city's capacity based on permitting data, assumptions, and development possibilities and current zoning. Pierce County provides this information to us through a Buildable Lands report that is also updated during this time to provide guidance as jurisdictions look to update their comprehensive plans and think about the next planning period. We also look at our residential development pipeline, which provides us with a reasonable understanding of what we believe will develop in the short term. As we can see on page five, the city does have capacity for approximately 2,000 dwelling units. The city's current assumed pipeline contains approximately 500 dwelling units. Neither of these numbers can be entirely precise, but they do help to inform the process. Page six. To reiterate, due to policy choices the city made and due to factors such as the recession and the state legislature's decision to extend vested rights for preliminary plats, the city has grown quickly and exceeded its previous growth target. We know that certain policy choices have already been made to help slow future growth, and we know that one or two developments were largely the reason for this rapid growth. Given all of these factors, including the city's current residential development capacity, staff is proposing a 1% average growth rate for the next planning period, which amounts approximately to the numbers that are shown on the table on page six. Staff is hopeful that council will agree to a growth rate today and direct staff to provide that number to the county for inclusion in the draft report that has also been provided to you for today and ultimately included in an appendix of the countywide planning policies. The targets will then be used to update the city's comprehensive plan in 2024 and guide growth for the next planning period. Thank you, and we are now available for questions.
So you're proposing 1,000 units? Is that what you're proposing?
Approximately 1,000 dwelling units and at a, an average persons per household of 2.2, that would be about 2,200 people.
And, and are these, do any of this 1,000 units come from anything that's currently in the pipeline?
Yes. So the pipeline at this point would be included in that, in that 1,000 dwelling units.
And how many are in the pipeline?
We estimate approximately 500.
So we need another 500 units, as you're saying.
That's what we.
Between now and 2044, is that right?
Correct.
Were there other cities that grew at the, at the rate that we did similar in Pierce County?
We, we grew at an astronomical rate. And correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Heims, but I believe we were number two in the, in the state.
Number two in the group. And the other ones, the one that exceeded us, it was a partial thing. It was Milton. They, they won the prize, but that was a
Annexation.
accounting thing than it was a real growth. They, they, they came in and was so-called partial.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing is you have to kind of separate out those cities that, that grew because of annexation and those cities that just grew within their own boundaries already. So.
I'm just, I'm just curious if someone did grow at, it's close to the rate we did and, and are concerned about what they're feeling, but without annexation. So it doesn't sound like there was one, right?
No, there was not.
No, the city, the city of Big Harbor grew at a per, per acre level higher than any other Puget Sound city.
Okay. And where, the high-capacity transit communities, where is that considered?
I, so the mayor's referring to
On page two.
On page two, where we're talking about the different geographies within VISION. There's metro cities, core cities, high-capacity transit communities, cities and towns, which is what we're in, and unincorporated areas in the rural area. High-capacity transit communities are DuPont, Fife, Furcrest, Sumner, and the Parkland, Spanaway, Midland, South Hill area. And that was defined by having access to either the train, light rail, or a bus service that comes, I believe, four times an hour.
Okay, guess where I'm going down the road? If, that's huge, 21%. If, if other areas don't grow, are they going to be coming back and pushing us for more than we originally anticipated?
No, at this point, the Pierce County is continuing to have discussions with all of the other geographies. The small towns, I think we're in a good place. The, there has been some discussion within high-capacity transit communities, not wanting to take the amount of growth that VISION has proposed for them. They are in discussions and we expect that they will. So there's not a, there's not a risk that that would go to the small communities. If anything, it would go to a higher level, such as the metro or the other cities.
Just for reference, from 2010 to 2020, Big Harbor achieved 93% of its target from 2010 to 2030. In other words, we made it in almost half the time. The rest, the total bottom line for Pierce County was at 27%. They were way off the mark. Okay? No one has come to us that I'm aware of and said, you guys got to make up the difference. Okay, it's, we couldn't if we tried. I mean, you throw in Tacoma, Puyallup, and some of the bigger ones that didn't make it. It's not in the cards. Okay. So I would hope that the attention would be on the bigger municipalities. The only way they're going to make their overall targets is they got to get those guys in bed with them. And right now, they're not.
Councilmember Heims brings up a good point and that we talked about in the Planning and Building Committee, and that is into the future, something that staff has recommended to, to council and the mayor going forward is we need to be more participatory within PCRC and at PSRC level. Yes, we are a small city, but we still matter. And so, as Councilmember Heims discussed, many of the cities within Pierce County, and this isn't unique to Pierce County, just did not grow at the rate in which they were supposed to grow. And so when those places don't grow and don't provide the housing units for people to move into, then that puts pressure on the outlying areas. Sumner, Ordin, Gig Harbor, we, the outlying areas of the counties did experience this pressure to grow. And so by participating more, we can encourage, you know, the higher density development within the more urban core areas, Tacoma, Lakewood, that have access to transit and better access to services, et cetera. And that could reduce the pressure on Gig Harbor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Is a question for Carl. Carl, of the 500 dwelling units that is in the pipeline, is that in permit pipeline or construction pipeline? And does it include the construction neighborhoods on either side of Burnham, just around Harbor Hill Road?
It does, Councilmember Rodenberg. So it's a, it's a mix of all of the things that you described. So it's approved preliminary plats. It's those that may have received a site plan approval for residential development, like cottages at Rosedale, for instance. And it includes though, some of those projects that are still under review for land use entitlements, but that we think would like, will likely develop.
Thank you.
I have a quick, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Spencer. So I added up all of the numbers for the small cities and towns, and I'm not great with the calculator, but my first try, I got to 17,518. So that basically leaves 1,000 units, which is our number for our 1%. Is that where we're getting our 1%?
No.
Okay, because that concerns me a little bit. What if, what if, I mean, are these numbers the other populations have given? Are those challenged at all? I mean, if.
Yeah, the, this is basically just straw numbers. I hate to put it that way, but this, these numbers have not yet gone through the formal process that we're going through here today. And there has been some internal discussions between the, the small cities of people taking too much. Carl may know this more, but you know, Bonnie Lake's proposing to grow a lot. And there's another city that I think had a higher, really high growth rate.
I think it was Edgewood.
Edgewood that, you know, they didn't accommodate in their previous rounds. And so they're really waiting for Gig Harbor, you know, because, and I know Carl didn't mention this, but with the advice from the Planning and Building Committee, we have not put a number into this document because we didn't want anything put on record that kind of bound Gig Harbor to grow at a certain rate. But these numbers, the draft numbers under table two, those are all draft. And we are not basing kind of what is left over based on what our recommendation is. What our recommendation really is based on is the amount of growth that we have seen, the amount of capacity that we have, and what's in the pipeline. So the consideration for that is obviously, we don't want to grow at the rate that we have been growing annually. I mean, the community's been very loud and clear about that. But we do know, again, with the pipeline, many of those projects do have land use entitlements, although Carl is correct, some don't have formal vesting, but they do have approved site plans. Many of them have approved short plats or plats. So those are things that legally the city must honor because for property rights, someone applies for a project and they expect to be able to develop as such. And that is in the pipeline numbers, Carl, where are they? That you put forward.
And the capacity, is that based on the city or is that based on the UGA?
Good question. So the capacity is looked at from Pierce County leads the charge, but it is looked at at a city basis as well as an urban growth area basis. So our Gig Harbor capacity is, it takes into account our zoning on our land, and it does not look at the urban growth area. So they, it's, it's an art, not a science. It's not exact. But it does look at properties and say, okay, is this vacant? If so, how many critical areas are on here? And it reduces critical areas, reduces places for roads. How many homes then could fit on this property? So, long story short, it is just Gig Harbor incorporated area. And it's a fairly complicated method of getting to that. But again, those are properties that have property owners that have what their zoning is and may have development plans for that. And so those are the numbers that Carl has outlined on page five, that our current capacity for dwelling units is 2,046 or 4,400 people. And our current pipeline is about 500 dwelling units or 1,100 people. And so when we're looking out 20 years, so again, think, you know, 2024 to 2044, how much of this capacity, if we don't change zoning, how much of that is going to develop? And likely, typically, it's around, you know, half or a little above half. And so, you know, combined with our growth rate and what we have capacity for, that has been our recommendation of 1%, which again, under previous rounds, was about what the proposal was. It's just that we ended up growing much faster.
Okay, Councilmember Abersold and then Councilmember Farnich. And then we'll go to Heims.
So I guess I'll just make a statement because I had a question, but also have a statement. This 11,000 number, you know, I was thinking that that's where we're at today and where would we be at at 2024 or 2044? You know, I was expecting someone was going to tell us that we were going to try to hit a goal of like 16,000, 17,000 people. And I was going to have to get into a big fight about that. So I'm very, very pleased to see this number, you know, 1344 for 2044 is what, you know, a projection that we would like to get to because I would have gone with about 4,000 more people bringing us to about 14,000. I would expect that that would have been reasonable with, by 2044. But the fact that you guys are trying to project us under there or try to get us under that number is even better. And so I'm really happy with that number. I think that's a reasonable. We can get even lower. You know, that's like, I guess, maybe trying to squeeze water from a rock, but I like that number. It's, it's even better than what I expected. And so if we can, if we can move to that direction, I think that's where we need to go. Because the ideas, the horror ideas in my head that I was thinking we were going to have to go to would have been just unbearable. Wouldn't, it would have destroyed the town and wrecked the whole nature and habitat that we got here. So good job for putting that together. And if we can get there, pat on the back for everyone who's in the future.
Councilmember Farnich.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is to Carl and Katrina, I'm very impressed with this white paper. I mean, you guys, it's concise, it's very clear-cut, and it's very transparent. You called out what the problems were that led us to where we're at. You didn't try and sweep it under the rug. You, you spelled it completely out the way it should have spelled, been spelled out. And I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. So that being said, when the mayor asked that question about the other cities, that I, I don't want to get, I mean, because this conversation could go on a long time if we start trying to worry about everything that's going on in my head as far as other cities rather than just this here that we're talking about today. But the one question I think that, that is pertinent today is on page four, it's urban unincorporated areas. How much has Pierce County, what's the population for the unincorporated Pierce County?
Bear with me one moment, Councilmember Farnich.
Because I'm assuming that that is part of our, that would be part of our UGA. The numbers that are
There's urban.
in unincorporated Pierce County right now.
There's urban unincorporated, which is our UG, is the UGAs overall. So all the UGAs put together throughout Pierce County. And then there's the rural unincorporated areas. And they do separate those.
Okay, what's the urban, do you know what the urban unincorporated areas? I see that it's 21,183, but what is, that's I'm assuming for all the counties, the Pierce, King.
It would be any, that would be for Pierce County's land that is zoned urban, that is not within a city. So like South Hill, Spanaway, Parkland, those are all urban areas that are not incorporated into a city, as well as that takes into account the Gig Harbor urban growth area portion.
I'm wondering what percentage of that 21,183 is associated with our urban area?
I don't believe we have that answer. We've asked for that answer. And that will become really important in the comp plan update because we, we can't have an urban growth area that has too much capacity when our city is reducing a growth rate. So we have to show consistency between the incorporated area, including our UGA, or we need to consider a UGA reduction. We don't, we don't have that answer yet.
Okay. Well, I, I think that it, it's worth noting that on page six of six in the white page, the white paper, the top paragraph, it says, "In order to allow communities to grow in accordance with local vision," I think that that is a key thing that we're all trying to get at today. And so I, I, I'm going to let Councilmember Heims, because he has some of the same questions that I have about some of these numbers here. But I just want to, once again, thank you for, for being so brutally honest in this paper on how we got to where. on how we got to where we're at and the solution, so we don't get there again.
Yeah, a couple of things. We talked about basically buildable land. And if you build up all the buildable land, you could get more than what we're posing here as targets. And one of the big factors that I argued for in this process was in the two thousand ten to two thousand twenty period, we built eight hundred excess dwelling units to the target that was required there. Translates to about two thousand people roughly, okay, at two point three occupants per household. Buildable land's only part of the story. The part of the story they don't include is infrastructure. By the way, this is the big mess in Seattle. I can go right down the line called, yeah, you, you grew, you grew employment. Boy, you did a fabulous job. There's only one problem. Infrastructure never caught up. It's still trying to catch up. So one of the biggest foundations of this plan, and one reason I bought into it, is that we need some time to catch up. You go back and look at our tip list, we really haven't dented that sucker for four years. It's pretty much right where it was when we got going, okay? So we need to do that. You look at all the other elements, you can look at the Transportation Improvement Plan. You can look at water, sewer, stormwater, all of those, younger families, parks. We're behind Eight Ball and Parks. We're pushing forward, but we're getting there. We, we need a breather in the worst way to get back on track. And the whole idea of concurrency, if you don't include that in your thinking, then you end up with the kind of problems that Huge Sound is grappling with right now. And they're building, for example, rapid transit, how many years late, okay? Or to have the problem, my five is already a mess. So enough of that. The, the other thing, and it'll come to me, I have kind of a.
I'll jump in and let you go back to it.
Why don't you swing back to me?
So.
It'll come back, trust me.
With all the permits, like the gravel pit and all the different places, Burnham, we don't have. How many, how many is that? I mean, I would think there's probably a thousand people if you include what's, you know, I mean, whatever they decide to do with the old gravel pit, whatever they want to call it, that's probably three hundred homes there. That's six hundred people. If you go up Burnham Drive, you're probably talking a couple hundred, two to, two to four hundred homes. That's, that's four to six hundred people. Aren't we two thirds of the way there?
We have about five hundred dwelling units in our pipeline currently, and that equates to about eleven hundred people. And that does include the, the terrace and village.
At least what they proposed to this point.
Okay, and so, and we have to accommodate how many more? You're projecting by twenty forty-four?
We're saying twenty-two hundred.
Okay, okay, so.
About another thousand.
It would be interesting to know what our UGA would hold as our own UGAs, as Councilmember Franch, because I would say the majority of all of our UGA will tie into sewer because that's what they like to do, which means they can go twice the density that is currently allowed in the UGA. So if we knew what Pierce County said would be in the UGA, you might as well double it because we'll probably have enough lift stations to accommodate more, plus they, they pump. And that's, we have to be watchful of that, and that would be a really good analysis. How, how can we find that information or how long would that take?
Pierce County has that, they have that data, and they're, they're still kind of crunching through all of the data as well as they're putting together this draft report right now, and they've just finished buildable lands. But the next phase of the buildable lands report is the, is the consistency analysis. And so that's looking at the, what, what has come out of the capacity so far? And then comparing that to our, our codes, our zoning codes, and making sure that we are developing consistently with what they're showing in buildable lands. And, and that will also be done by Pierce County. So that's when they'll be looking into the, the individual UGAs because each of those UGAs has different sets of standards based on where they are in the, in the world. And we're, you know, like, we're out here on the peninsula, so we have kind of a different set of standards that they review projects through. So that would all come out in that consistency phase. So that's, that's coming very soon. And again, a lot of what we're talking about, and including concurrency, as Councilman Heinz brought up, those are all analyses that will be done when we're looking at updating the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-four. So a lot of what we're doing here is early work that's going to inform, ultimately inform our comp plan when we get to that point. And, and I think Katrina said it earlier, some of this stuff might change. There's, there's definitely some opportunities for some of these things to change along the way until we get to twenty twenty-four. And one, one of the things that we're waiting for is the OFM numbers to come out. Those, they're still, they're still not released until I think it's the spring of next year. So there's, there's still work to be done on this. But, you know, we're, we're still kind of forced to choose an allocation at this, at this point in time.
And with the UGA as well, as the, as the mayor just stated, I want to say something quickly, supporting the mayor and then Councilmember Heinz. But the, the urban growth areas, Carl mentioned, we will be looking at that capacity. And then depending on what the growth rate is for the UGA and the city, it may, we may have a reduction in the UGA through the comp plan update. We don't know that yet, but it may happen. But with that is the conversations, and we'll talk about that under our third agenda item of this work session today, is how we're working with Pierce County. I know you know the recent CIPA issue, but there's other issues that we're working toward a potential urban growth area management agreement. And that could get to what Mayor Keen talked about in terms of what development regulations does the county review projects under? Is it the city standards or is it county standards? And there are cities that have the county review under city standards, which then would reduce the density in the UGA and, you know, have further tree retention. So that's one thing that we are looking at that will be a good thing moving into the future. The second thing is Councilmember Heinz is a hundred percent correct about the infrastructure inconsistency. And in comprehensive planning, one of the major things that you need to look at if you're going to upzone an area or include a new area into your city or urban growth area is infrastructure. And so one of those checks and balances that staff are wanting to put into our code and comprehensive plan are, if we're considering a development agreement or an upzone of a certain area, not only does there need to be population capacity available or demand for that area, but one of those checks that's typical in other comprehensive plans is, does the city currently have capacity to serve that, both with roads and sewer? And what we found with the Harbor Hill development in particular is that was such a large development that the city did not have it with, there was inconsistency between what the zone was or what they were allowed to do and what we had in our CFP. And so that's what the city's been dealing with. I mean, in terms of sewer, in terms of traffic for the village, in terms of meeting RFBs, that is all due to a consistency analysis that should have been done when that decision was made. So Councilmember Heinz really hit the nail on the head in terms of infrastructure consistency. And again, that is one of the checks and balances that we want to ensure is put into our municipal code and comp plan.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Heinz, it's just.
I just remembered a couple of things. One of them is the. Oh, you mentioned the prior issues that folded in the massive overage in growth in Gig Harbor. And one of the things in there is the lag time when you try to make a corrective action and when you actually see the results of that action. In other words, had you recognized it and had you acted on it, when would things have changed? And the best example is what we did in two thousand eighteen. Right now, to the best of my knowledge, I believe the gravel pit is the first one that doesn't have an approved preliminary plat on either the upper or the lower, and it will apply, okay? So that was what, almost four years ago, call it three and a half, okay? That's the kind of lag between what you see and says, oh, oh, things are getting out of, getting out of hand here. And even if you act, that's how long it's gonna take to get that into effect, to start to affect actual construction of dwellings, okay? Well, I think that's a big, big deal. One of the things that I've, I've asked for is that planning monitor this thing on an ongoing basis and see how we're doing. And if it looks like we're going out of control, that is, we're about to overachieve again wildly, basically consider proposing legislative actions for the council to act on to slow things down if we have to. And that's something I think we really, really need. Somebody will be at least monitoring this thing to see how it's going, okay? At least on an annual basis, for example, called, how are we moving cumulatively, what have we built? And if you really want to get fancy, I'll give those fans out there. Well, I would include the, the rate at which you're, you're climbing. In other words, you, you still may be below target, the target line, the linear target line. But if your rate is sky high versus the hope of the target line, you're gonna cross over at some point and you're gonna overshoot. Those are the kind of things I think we need to get it. All, hey, we need better anticipatory tools so that this doesn't happen again, okay? Because they, they had a low target between two thousand ten, two thousand twenty, and they shot way past it, okay?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wu, and then Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, two things. We heard Jeff talk at the budget meeting about having to buy more water in about, what, five years? So I think if we're buying rights, more water rights, I assume that other cities are also going to be buying more water rights. And I think that that's something that we need to take a look at seriously. Obviously, for me, I'd like to see, instead of a thousand units, I'd like to see five hundred units. That's what I like to see. I like to see slower, less. But especially since we're looking at having to buy more water rights, what that means and what, what other cities are doing. And, and I think I, I'm, I'd like to slow it down even more, if at all possible. And I'm also concerned about the word concurrency as we start to look in our comprehensive plan. Concurrenty is six years, is defined as six years, but really concurrency is not six years. I don't like, I don't know, in fact, it's the state law. Is that a state thing? Is it a state thing? So I, I like to see concurrency at three years. So we can at least give our citizens the, the infrastructure that we can't do it at the same time. It'd be nice if we could do it at the same time. We should do it at the same time. But I get that we, maybe we need more time. I think six years is too much. And I think our community would really like to see concurrency to be a little faster, if at all possible. Three years, I think would be better, but I'm really concerned about the water rights that we're gonna have to buy. And I don't want, I'm concerned for lots of reasons. I'm concerned because other cities are buying it and are gonna also need to buy it. And I don't want to send a message to Pierce County or anybody else that we have plenty of resources. And so we can, you can just give us more houses. We don't want to go there. So that's my concern.
The, you know, going to concurrency and compatibility between the capital facilities plan and the comp plan, it's very important. There's lots of case law about that. In terms of water and sewer, it's my understanding that our sewer plant, as well as our water, we have enough currently planned for to accommodate our entire city's current zoning. So in term, in, in that regard, I don't believe that that is a concern, although I will definitely check with Director Langholm on that. But I, I know our treatment plant is currently sized.
Right.
For the full area and that we have water, at least for the population. Now, the portion of water, large water users are typically, you know, the, the hospital, the schools, you know, things like that. So we may need to look on the employment side regard to water, which again, we're not discussing today.
Thank you, Councilmember Franch, and then Councilmember Kinzen.
Well, you know, boy, there's, I have a lot of quiet, whenever anybody else speaks, it, it pops a question in mind. So I'm gonna try and write these down and circle back. But do you have any flavor of whether or not the OFM is gonna push back against? Because we've been working with the Pierce Sound Regional Council members. And, you know, obviously, we all know that Office of Financial Management has been dragging their feet on coming up with numbers. So do you have any sense of whether or not the OFM is gonna go with Pierce Sound Regional Council members, which is what we're using?
Yes, okay, so there's, the first thing to note is that PSRC, the numbers that we're looking at right now, we're in twenty twenty-one. These numbers for Vision were developed three years ago. So that was pre-pandemic, pre-everything. And again, this is because it's a planning exercise. You have to decide on your base and then plan for it, right? I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would anticipate the OFM numbers, which again, are the GMA mandated numbers that we plan for. We are not mandated to plan by Vision per GMA. I anticipate the OFM numbers to be different than PSRC. I don't know exactly what the delta will be. Why do I think that the Office of Financial Management, the officer that creates these, they, they are not behind. They're supposed to give it to us by April of next year, and that's the typical population process. We're on this advanced schedule because Pierce County got a grant in order to conduct this general work under Vision. That's why we are dealing with this so far in advance of the comp plan update. The Office of Financial Management, they take into account in and out migration, immigration, births, deaths, and, and patterns of, of that sort, which are generally different than the demographic standards that PSRC utilizes. I anticipate them to be different. That being said, the OFM numbers will come in the form of a total county allocate or number, and it will be on a high, medium and low range. And it is up to the Pierce County Council to determine if they're gonna go high, me, medium or low. So we have a mechanism to get within this range.
And we've seen those numbers, that the high, low, high, medium, low. What are these numbers that we've been working off? Aren't we the, the medium call?
We don't have those numbers yet. Those won't come out until.
I thought we saw in the Planning and Building Committee, a table that had high, medium and low numbers.
Last, that might have been the last set of numbers that, that OFM released. It's not the, it's not what we're waiting for now.
Well, right, but what, what out of that table that we saw then, what, what, what numbers are these working off? But my fear is that the Office of Financial Management is gonna be much more aggressive, and I think that, that these numbers are gonna go up.
But with that, and I've, we've talked about that a little bit as well. And the, the thing that we're resting on is that Pierce County is bound by the countywide planning policies. And so together, they, the, all the jurisdictions will agree to this framework, these draft numbers that are in here from the other cities as well as our numbers. And that is a policy that we are all bound by. So the Pierce County Council, when they get the OFM numbers in that range, they wouldn't be able to make the decision necessarily to go outside of that range. Will it be exact? I don't think so. Will it impact Gig Harbor? I also don't think so. If it comes in higher, it's going to be toward the metro cities. I mean, Tacoma is supposed to take six, almost sixty percent of our total share, whatever percent that is. It will be a lot more burden on other areas other than Gig Harbor, but that will be something we'll want to monitor.
The, the core cities are not, they, they haven't even been able to live up to their twenty, thirty numbers, let alone stacking more numbers on top of them for twenty forty-four, so, you know.
It's a big thing for them to reckon with in these comp plans coming up.
Well, so, you know, and, and what really happened? Because when the Growth Management came out, it was supposed to be concurrency, concurrency, concurrency. And you, you never see any concurrency. I mean, not, not only by this jurisdiction, by any jurisdiction. So wh- wh- where is the mechanism to make this concurrency happen?
The, the mechanism really comes in terms of grant funding. From the PSRC side, it is federal transportation dollars, which they have decertified folks and taken grant funds away. Other than that, from the state level, it is grants really of any state kind that we would not be eligible for. But that's really the mechanism that's within state law.
Well, those mechanisms obviously haven't been working.
Oh, I should say, there's. Oh, I should say there's also another mechanism, which is the, uh, Growth Management Hearings Board. So any citizen or anyone withstanding could appeal a jurisdiction's actions, which regularly happens, knock on wood, not here. But, um, and that's another way that the courts can correct administrative decisions regarding comprehensive plans.
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, th- these numbers were staggering when you see the, you know, the Gig Harbor North area is accounting for, you know, over 3,000 um, residents. And that road, I mean, as Councilmember Heinz always points out, what, what's going on with those roundabouts? The, 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 the infrastructure just is, is lacking. And I, I mean, I don't know what the answer is because any road project is, is just millions of dollars. But, and you can't just say, no, you can't build until the road gets put in. I mean, this is such a, such a hard, um, thing to be fair to all sides. But I mean, I'll tell you, it's, it's, it's bad out there.
Okay, so, um, um, we need to, we need to go on to the topics. We have other people. I have one comment, but do you have anything else to wrap that up?
Um, no.
Um, go ahead, Councilmember Denson.
Thank you. No, I'll be quick. Um, but I completely agree that concurrency is, I think, a concern for all of us. And it's not only roads and sewer and water and parks, but I've heard from the fire department that they aren't even taking into consideration with concurrency. And they had, see all these developments trying to pop up, not only in the city, but in the UGA, that they are fighting because they're like, we cannot, we can't handle it because they don't get, um, they don't have the same concurrency requirements, I guess, or, or, um, accommodations in the comp plans as roads and sewer. So I would like, I would like that to be taken into consideration, um, because otherwise they're having to come to the rest of the public for levies and bonds.
And that's something we can take care of in our city's comprehensive plan in the next update.
Really?
We can incorporate the fire district into our capital facilities plan concurrency.
That would be great. Fire and EMS would be important because they're really feeling strained as well. Um, yeah, so I completely agree with what Councilmember Francis said, and I agree with Councilmember Wook, but I'd like to see a, a lower number, maybe somewhere between five and 700.
I do have to say, I think we actually are, um, doing pretty good on concurrency. Um, it's, as for some, yeah, because, um, we've done, you know, we, we have, uh, the, um, project at Scancy and Hunt. We wanted, you know, we wanted them to do that whole infrastructure, the whole, um, uh, light there, and we tried to get them to do it before they started the, uh, rush started that, and they wouldn't do it. But they did, they did, they could not get their certificate of occupancy until they improved that light with turn lanes. We have the Harbor Hill. We're thinking about metering. We've, uh, fixed our, uh, lift stations. Uh, we've, we're working on a lot of our water pumps. We're trying to get another, I mean, we actually have a lot of things in the pipeline that actually, you know, where the roundabouts are doing. Uh, Wagner Way might get it, uh, will probably get, where crosswalks we're doing. Where actually, I want, I want the development, the infrastructure before it's developed. Because then when all the people are there, you're not trying to get around at the same time. If the developers put it in beforehand, right before, then when all the people come, it's already in. But I think the city itself, in the last four years, we've, we've actually done a lot of things to make infrastructure that was lagging go in place.
Yeah, I meant transportation. I'm not talking about enterprise funds.
Okay, but roads too. We, we've done a lot on our roads.
Given the hand that we were dealt.
Yes.
We have not done that badly.
Yeah.
We were dealt a horrible hand.
Yeah, we were, and we've worked hard to catch up, and that is part of our planning department and our public works. You know, we're making sure, and council, making sure things, yes, we still have a long ways to go.
Mayor, should we bring this back for another work session? And I.
Once, can, let's wait until we have that UGA figures, if we may. How long would that?
We have about 28 minutes until.
No, but the, uh, UGA figures of finding out what our UGA figures would be is how long?
We can reach out to the county and then talk with you and Tony about scheduling a subsequent time to discuss. If I could just, um, one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead and wrap it up.
Wrap us. Um, I understand that, you know, that people may want to see a lower number than what staff's recommending. And, and I hear you, and I understand, and I hear that from the citizens as well. The reason that that's problematic, so let's look at the other side of that coin. Okay? So our capacity currently is for 4,400 people, and that's based on current city zoning. So folks, citizens of ours that have a piece of property that's zoned a certain way that they, you know, have for investment purposes or to live on. Our current housing pipeline is approximately 500 dwelling units or 1,100 people. Again, those are projects that already have land use entitlements, so we cannot go back on those legally. Um, if we go down to less, you know, like 600 people or 700 people per year, if we subtract out the pipeline that we already know is going to happen, if we look over the 20-year period, that would be about 11 people to 20 people per year of growth.
That'd be great.
And so, you know, and everybody has their own opinion of that, but that's not very realistic in terms of what we should be planning for. And one of the main reasons for that is if we say, if we set an arbitrarily low number, for instance, if we say we're only going to grow by 1,000 people, that's not realistic because we already know that we have projects in the pipeline that are going to be more than that. So initially, if we did a plan that way and sent that to the state, it would get kicked back for inconsistency. Additionally, our current city, our infrastructure that we have been planning for is sized for our current zoning. So if we reduce it beyond that, then we have done our, then we've gone opposite way for concurrency in a number of ways. Um, additionally, and again, this may please some people, but we do again have that capacity of 4,400 people. If we're only going to grow 600 people, let's say, then what we will have to do in the next comp plan update is look at reducing city limits or down zoning areas in order to get within a, an achievable, um, uh, so that we have, um, consistency between what our city is zoned and what we're proposing to grow. So currently, um, professionally, we cannot agree to something that's less than the pipeline. We know that there's other projects that are out there that are coming in or going to be coming in. We have a lot of areas that are zoned that people may be asking for projects to come in. It's not likely that those won't happen. And so what we're trying to do is set a plan that slows the growth rate down. So we're not growing at the 7% annually that we were, that was too high. But we're growing at around a 1% growth rate that would give us time to breathe. It would slow the rate down from what our citizens have. It would also allow us to base our planning decisions on our currently existing capital facilities plans. And it would allow for the zoning within the city to stay the way it is. So we really tried to take the look at, we know that the community doesn't want to grow how much it was before, but we can't go too low or else we're, we will, we'll overshoot that number and not have planned for it. So we really believe that this 1% will take into account the pipeline as well as a little buffer room for what a typical year of growth would look like, um, outside of the development agreement era. And we really feel that around 100, uh, 1,100 folks would, um, or 2,200 folks or around 1,000 units would do that trick. It would land us in a sweet spot of severely slowing growth down, but also honoring our, um, capital facilities as well as, um, not requiring a significant downzone within the city of the next comp plan.
So is it a problem to downzone?
Yes.
Because why?
Uh, I personally, I'm not in favor. Someone buys a piece of property based on the zoning that they're in, and then you downzone their property, more than likely you're going to get sued. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's a professional thing to downzone property that was purchased, um, with the intent that the zone already had. I think you need to find other tools to do so, and I think you'd be a backlash.
So didn't we do that during the war touring?
No, we did not. We, we, we did our codes. That's, that we did not downzone. We redid our codes and created larger buffers and made it so they could have piggyback on short plating.
Wasn't that the same thing?
No, it's not. It's completely different.
So what, what, ultimately, if we go with this, um, 1,100, sorry, 2,200 people or 1,000 units, what will end up happening? And again, I don't have a crystal ball. But depending on what the capacity in the UGA is, we'll need to look at the consistency between, you know, how much we can accommodate in the city, how much there, and what the demand is. If we're accommodating more within the city than what is needed, then the UGA will reduce. And that's a, a GMA process. So the community at large may, may see a reduction in urban development. It just may not be within the city limits itself. And that is how the GMA is, is set up to work. Um, if we did go down to, let's say, only honor what's in the pipeline, um, that we would need to go through a full community process of looking at areas to go, you know, areas that are currently zoned, um, residential high, we would need to have maybe those go down to residential low. We need to look at commercial areas where, um, mixed use was encouraged and consider, you know, down zoning those. And again, that would be a huge process that currently the staff is not recommending, especially when we think that we can hit the sweet spot with the 1,000 units. Keep the zoning at least the way it is for now, do some moderate changes during the, the next comp plan update. But really, if we think about it, we grew at 7% a year average for six years in a row. That is significant. We're not underplaying that, and you can read that in the white paper. But we're, what we're saying is take that from seven and go to one. That is a significant reduction. And it still allows our property owners to maintain their property rights that exist today. Um, and we really strongly feel that that is, um, a very significant correction, but will again, uh, be a balanced, realistic and fair growth plan going into the next comp plan.
Great. And I, I do, that's, I can, we need to wrap it up. We have some callers that have been waiting for our next subject.
Absolutely.
Um, I think, I, I don't see how we're going to even stay at our 1%.
So that's, that was my purpose, being the instigator of this, this particular session. And looking forward, um, the, the thought in my mind was, hey, let's at least get an, a couple of numbers on that chart before somebody decides to pencil in some numbers, okay, that we don't like, okay? And given that, I guess the question to Katrina and would be, how much time do we have left for us to pencil numbers in that chart for population and for dwelling units?
Or do we need you to just pencil in 1%? And I think that's, I mean, I don't see how we're even going to grow as little as that. I just don't. So I think we, if we, if we all did, I think we'd be very thrilled. So I don't know if we need to wait to pencil that in.
Uh, there, there's some options. Um, we could pencil in 1% for the benefit of the Pierce County report so they can do the full analysis because they are waiting for us. Um, but to answer Councilmember Heinz's question, the, the full actual sign seal delivered is not going to be until March-ish of next year. So we do have time to analyze this further. We will be coming back with employment targets, so we will have to talk about growth again, but in a different way. Um, so there is some time. So if we needed to have an additional work session, we could do that. Um, or if the council felt comfortable, a majority of council felt comfortable going forward with 1%, we could pencil that in and kind of move forward.
I think we could, we could have another study session, but I think we shouldn't wait. I, I like you said, I'd hate someone else to put in our number. I think with the support of council, we should pencil that in.
I think we should. That's, that's where, by the way, it's, it's 0.8%.
Yeah.
A thousand units over 24 years.
I mean, it's, it's.
Seven, eight percent, if you're going to go to.
The hot market's going to drive more than that. So I, and I really don't want to wait. So if it counts as supportive of penciling in 0.8, I think, uh, we can still have another session, but I think we shouldn't wait. I think they need to hear from us right away.
Did you say 0.8?
Yes.
0.8, zip, 0.8.
So it's.
So it would not be 1.8.
Eight tenths of 1%.
Eight tenths of 1% versus 7%.
Councilmember Rodenberg is giving us the thumbs up.
Okay.
Just want to acknowledge.
I really think if, if we sit on this, it tells the county that we either we're very more flexible or we're not even sure. And I think, I think they need to hear that.
Does that, this, does this take a resolution from the council or?
No, it just takes a, a recommendation to staff.
Okay, okay.
I would support that.
Okay, you support that? Francis?
I, I want to use the correct percentage, which is 0.8.
Yes, that's what we're saying. So we're just, I'm asking you yes or no, because we have to go on.
We, we said approximately 1%. The numbers on the back page, on page six, do represent the 0.8% that Councilmember Heinz is talking about. We said approximately 1%, um, just because it's not necessarily set in stone per se, but we're comfortable with the numbers that are on the back.
Okay, uh, okay. I think you, did, Councilmember Wook, did you reply?
I, I did not reply, and I hate to do this, but I'm going to go for 0.8.
Okay.
Yeah, 0.8 and study session.
Okay.
And I screen.
I agree as well.
Great, thanks. You, you in or out?
I have one more question.
Just one sec, Councilmember Francis? What would?
It's sort of.
We just have to, we have to go on. We have people. Okay, go ahead.
So do we just tell people then, if we have, can only grow this much, when they come to do something, we say, no, you can't have your project?
No, it doesn't work that easy.
So how does it work?
Good question. We will be doing further analysis once we have the, these numbers. So what will happen, and it, it's not set in stone. So I will say that we still recommend through the comp plan that we put checks and balances in the code and the comp plan. So I say that before I'm going to say this, but fully 100% support Councilmember Heinz. Um, an annual report from the Community Development Department to the council on what the rate of growth was. Is it what we expected? Is it out of whack? Do we need to do something? That should be done annually. And so, um, we hope to never get to that point because we will be communicating with the council, um, in, in a proactive manner. However, to get to your actual legal question, once we get to that number of 11 or 1,000 dwellings and someone comes in, um, they, if it's a complete application, they would vest. So again, that's why we don't want to go with the arbitrarily low number because unless we change zoning, there's really not, no mechanism for us to stop an application from coming in.
So this 1% or 8% doesn't mean anything.
It will, it will mean something because we're going to look at the amount of dwelling units and population and compare that to our, how we are zoned right now. And we'll also look to how the urban growth area is zoned. And again, that may require, uh, an urban growth area reduction, which to some people might be a good thing, um, because our UGA and our city need to be planning together. Um, but again, that goes to assumptions because we don't, we don't have the crystal ball to know exactly what's going to happen. But we will compare the numbers to how our properties are zoned. And then that combined with this annual report to council of how much we're growing, are we growing too fast, and what do we need to do?
So if we are growing too fast, then we can do things like down zoning or something if we needed to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you know, if you do tree retention that we're working on next year, that's going to help on some of these mechanisms as well.
All right.
Okay, okay. We're going to move on to the next topic. Thank you very much. Our next topic is temporary suspension of special use provision and encroachment permits. Again, this meeting is not to vote on it, and we've never, uh, never talked of banning outdoor dining. I don't think Gig Harbor has ever banned outdoor dining. So some of those things I just have to point out are, um, just since we've received a lot of emails. And with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Katrina Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, the, as the mayor stated, we're here to talk about ordinance 1448, which was the ordinance that temporarily suspended some special use provisions and fees for encroachment permits uh, for the purposes of COVID relief for our small businesses. In the interest of time, I will just very briefly go over the history because I'm sure you all remember. But, um, oh, well, first I should say that this was asked to be put on the agenda today, I believe, by Councilmember Denson to discuss, um, to discuss the ordinance and what we're, if we're going to keep it or what we're going to, to do with that. Uh, this started in March 23rd. The mayor issued an emergency proclamation, um, due to the COVID-19 virus. And at that time, if you think back, if you can, uh, you know, businesses were shut down. We weren't able to go into rest, restaurants were shut down for a number of months. It was very limited in terms of retail when we could enter, um, structures. And so the mayor issued the proclamation that temporarily suspended special use permits and fees for encroachment permits to facilitate commerce during that time. The council ratified that shortly after and provided a sunset, sunset date of August 1st of 2020. So at that point, we didn't know how long the pandemic was. At that point, we didn't know how long the pandemic was gonna go. Um, as we now know, the pandemic has continued to go on. And on July twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty, the council passed ordinance fourteen forty-six, which extended, uh, these provisions through the end of December of two thousand and twenty. And that was taken, uh, when we had a dropping case rates and, you know, we were hopeful that we would be reopened by the end of that year. Again, unfortunately, we had another uptick and council on November twenty-third of two thousand and twenty passed ordinance fourteen forty-eight. That did the same thing of extending the suspensions on special use and encroachment permit fees. But it set a sunset date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, or until the governor, governor issues the emergency order for COVID. So I, I want to reiterate right now that as of right now, December thirty-first of this year, the, the ordinance will still be in effect after that, as long as Governor Inslee keeps the emergency order in place for COVID. Um, as you can see in the paper that was provided to you, um, we had uh, the initial period of the pandemic was characterized by limited occupancy for retail and takeout of restaurants. And so a legal nexus was able to be made from the city for, um, the relaxation of these standards due to, again, restaurants being at limited capacity as well as, um, retail. And I, I think, you know, as you can see, many businesses use this, and I'm really proud that the, to be part of the city action that did this. Uh, in preparation for this session, we conducted analysis of businesses that are still utilizing this provision, and those are on the page here. And they are Anna Marum, uh, the Heritage Distilling, Seven Seas Brewery, Wet Coast Brewery, Mock to Zumas, and more so. Uh, other businesses listed under the bullet below, um, the Hihihi, Ilacano, Tights Tavern, Port of Viard, and that should number nine, Anthony's, Finn Holmes, Cutter's Point, Blue Agave, Fonda, Halftime Sports, Table Forty-Seven, Sunset Grill, and Lele. They all utilized this at some point, uh, during the pandemic. But are no longer utilizing that. So again, we have six businesses that are currently utilizing this. Um, we believe that fourteen, ordinance fourteen forty-eight has been a successful program that helped um, and continues to help businesses to, um, particularly restaurants um, and drinking facilities to, to function during the pandemic. And the, the legal nexus for allowing this to continue, um, still exists, even though the restaurants and um, restaurants and brewery limitation on occupancy is not there. You know, we do know that there's a number of um, or there's folks in our community that are, um, immunocompromised or simply fearful of being inside of a structure right now due to the pandemic. And so the, the legal nexus for allowing this to continue is still valid. So I want the council to know that. Um, I say right in here with success comes drawbacks that we need to think about. And some of those are, um, that we did have several code enforcement, um, complaints filed against one of the businesses that's operating under this. The main complaint for that is noise. And this is again, the special use provision that's being utilized is, um, commerce outside of the typical business area. So this particular business is operating outside of, uh, an approved site plan area. We have talked with, uh, the complainants in this regard. And let them know that this is not something that the business is doing illegally. They're allowed to do that pursuant to this ordinance fourteen forty-eight. So for now, um, you know, we consider the matter to be, um, taken care of. The, there have been other complaints that have not been formal complaints that have either come in by phone, email, or folks visiting us. Uh, many of those are, uh, concerning kind of the look and feel of the tents that are, that are up, um, and also parking space reduction. There's one of the businesses on this list that has, um, large tents in their required parking area. And therefore, the tenant or the people that are coming in to, um, visit this business are not able to park in those spots, and therefore those people are parking in another businesses' parking spaces that are required for their business. So, um, those are just some examples of, of what we've heard. I would not classify this as something that we receive a lot of complaints about. I think that in general, the community's been understanding about the need for this, um, and the reason why the city council approved this. Um, so that is just a very brief overview of what this is, what it's done, who's using it, and kind of what the complaints have been. Um, we, staff understands that council may want to consider continuing this ordinance into two thousand and twenty-two. Um, or, or potentially until the governor's order, um, ceases, maybe some time after that has been discussed. And, um, and so we're, I'm available for questions as well as Carl. Um, depending on where the council would like to go with this.
I think, well,
Councilmember Abersole.
I think it's safe to say, uh, that we will be still in COVID, uh, at this time next year. Um, and probably beyond that, uh, there's a new Delta Plus variant that's now traversing the globe. It's, uh, going explosive in UK. It's been reported here, and probably within six months, it'll be the dominant strain. And, uh, this disease is obviously continuing to just mutate and grow stronger and stronger. Uh, and I don't see that trend reversing in any way. So, um, you know, I won't say how long I believe COVID is gonna be here, but it's gonna be here probably longer than I'll be a councilperson. Um,
so. I love you're such an optimist.
Well, you know, let's, let's be realistic. So, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, all in favor of allowing this to continue for another year. But what I don't wanna do is set the precedent that we're just gonna, uh, give this land, these parking stalls to these businesses as a gift. Uh, this cannot be a permanent thing, but I think for now, this is a good way to, to handle this kind of situation. This is how people should work together. Communities and their city government to overcome these kind of problems. But, um, as far as I, I, I hear in these emails, a lot of talk about allowing it to be a permanent thing. I'm not in favor of that. I don't think we should be in favor of that, but I think extending it for another year, another two years, it's perfectly logical and perfectly reasonable. So those are my thoughts.
You know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of what we've done in the past. I, I do wanna exit at some time because I do worry that it's, um, not fair across the board with businesses and, uh, there's repercussions if you did this permanently. Because, you know, for instance, let's just, you know, there, there, an example is a place up on Kimball Drive. And they block off, you know, I don't know how many, but three to five parking spaces. There's six other, there's about five other, um, stores on that same strip, uh, right next to it. And if they block off, uh, three to six parking spaces right there, that means you've got, you've got about, um, that many more, that many, no, the people that come there are now gonna park in that same area. But you've got four or five other businesses, three to six other businesses right there, and now they've lost their parking for their customers. And sure, if it's after five o'clock, you know, and they're all closed, then that's fine. It's not a big deal to me. But if it's during the weekend and you've got a, a, a computer store there, and you've got all these other, and a, a cell phone store. Boy, if I wanna get something fixed and I can't find a place to park, there's not other parking there. You're gonna go. I had a small retail store. And if it, my biggest, one of my biggest dilemmas was when people said, I can't find a parking space, they didn't come back for months. And so if you're a small business and you don't have the extra space to do this, you just lost a lot of your parking when you're getting, when you're letting a place have outdoor seating for twenty or twenty-five people. And now there's, uh, fifteen more cars, and that's taking away from the other small businesses. So I'm not for rewarding certain businesses at the cost of others. And so that's, we did it at a temporary thing. I don't mind going past, Jen, past December. But I would like, I would think that a six month of, of next year, and then you look at it again. Now, they put an investment in it, and they still have their investment. And I think if you did it for six months in two thousand and twenty-one, and then looked at the, looked at, find out what is happening with the virus, and then it's good. But I do not think you should reward certain businesses at the cost of others. And it's not, nothing against these businesses. It's just trying to be fair to every business that has a limited amount of extra space. That's my two cents, Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that two cents, uh. For tonight, I think we shouldn't, permanent change is off the table in my mind, number one, okay? We're talking about an extension of the uh, allowance of these particular tents or structures or, you know, outside activities. And I think it comes down to, do we really believe that this thing is gonna be, is Governor Inslee is going to repeal this thing in December, by December thirty-first? And is there some period we have to go beyond it? Is it six months? Is it three months? What is it that gives the businesses some, some message of certainty called, hey, you can't plan on this thing past some date. It may not be there. And by the way, that was what they've argued for all along. I would also add on the permanent basis, there was never any great demand to do outdoor spaces till the virus hit. The virus was the driver of this whole thing. That's why we did it. It was to basically give these businesses relief, okay? Under unusual circumstances. So, uh, I don't feel any, any guilt whatsoever in saying, hey, wait a minute. Let's go back to where we were with this thing. And if there's a future drive to consider this thing on a permanent basis, so be it. But for the time being, I, I, I agree with the mayor. I think it's strictly a, a temporary thing. Do we extend the extension to some fixed date where they can plan around, uh, or do we not? Simple as that.
Other comments?
Um, okay, I had a question for Director Knutson. Um, because, because of this pandemic, we do have this outdoor dining and the experience, and I think a lot of people have actually found out that they enjoyed it. And, you know, we saw from the emails that people really either have enjoyed it or find it a better, um, better solution for them if they're concerned about being inside during COVID. So for the ones that are, that are operating out of doors, um, what would it take for some of these businesses to, to actually have these spaces become permanent? And are there some businesses that can and some businesses that can't, depending on where they're operating outside endeavors?
It's a, it's a good question, and we would have to look at them on a case-by-case basis. Um, there's some that are, a- as we said, taking place in parking lots that are required parking for those uses. Uh, that would be something that we would not approve a site plan amendment for. Uh, because the, again, those parking spaces are required for certain uses within, within structures. Um, that's not to say that if there was some other property, you know, nearby that restaurant, like some of them, um, like I believe what Heritage has done, you know, going next door into that, um, where Birds Unlimited used to have all of their bird fountains and stuff, you know, that was a creative use of, you know, of space, uh, to accommodate that. Um, so I, I think in Heritage is, um, not to call them out, but you know, in their, um, in their instance, it, it would be a site plan amendment that would be, um, maybe minor site plan amendment would be required to have that be permanently done if that was desired. Um, and, uh, but some of the ones, for instance, um, Mock to Zumas that are, it's taking up however many parking spaces that, that would put them out of whack with their required parking, which again is another thing that we hear from our citizens a lot or the citizens of the, the city that there's not enough parking. So, you know, it's, it's something to be balanced, and that's typically what's done through the site plan process. Is, um, you know, we look for, I just wrote them down here, is, you know, health, um, health, safety, parking. We look for, um, a, a whole nother number of things, ADA accessibility. Um, and those are things that the city currently has not reviewed on any of these, um, sites. It's just kind of, you can do this.
So, so in general, I know, I'm sure it's case by case, but in general, if a company is, is having its tables and chairs on its property but not in the parking lot, there's a chance that a site plan review could be done, and that could be a permanent change for them.
Certainly. And there's one business that's on here, um, that already, that went through hearing examiner last year and has a site plan approval for, um, for kind of a reconstruction of their business. And so that's absolutely something that is considered, and that's what the site plan code is for. Is to consider the impacts of an, an additional portion of the use and consider the, the items that I mentioned. Carl, did you have anything to add?
I would just add that one of the, one of the major criteria for site plan approval is compatibility with surrounding uses as well. So that's, you know, that's a, that's a biggie when we're talking about, um, especially when we're talking about outdoor seating and, and use of a site. Um, and so how is that affecting, um, those other uses that are around? And is that, if, you know, if it's in a commercial area and it's all commercial around there, then maybe that's not an issue. But if you're up against a residential neighborhood, for instance, and it's a commercial use, then that's something that has to be considered uh, during that site planning as well. Uh, the other thing that we haven't talked about yet is, um, fire code, um, accessibility, ingress, egress. Um, he, those, those are, those are big, big factors that get ironed out during the site planning process. And whether or not there are, um, um, building permits required, for instance, for, for a structure that's built. Um, that, you know, maybe it's right now, maybe they're temporary or semi-temporary, but if they wanted to put something permanent in there, then that would certainly have to be done into the site plan process and then determined whether or not we would need, um, any building permits as a result of that. Um, and, and the last thing I'll bring up is, uh, the design manual is, is pretty strict on what sorts of materials you can build from, uh, what they look like, how tall they are, um, the, uh, you know, is even the pitch of the, of the roof line. So, you know, those are all things that also come out in the, in the site plan process. So it's not insurmountable. These are certainly things that can be done. It's just, there's a, there's a, a body of work that would need to be done first to, in order to determine whether or not it could be used in such a way.
Uh, Councilmember Rodenberg.
I'm sorry. Yes, I, I tend to agree with my, uh, fellow council member Spencer Abersole. In as much as I think at a minimum, we should extend this at least a year and make it expire in December of two thousand and twenty-two. That would give the development that Katrina, a chance to, uh, look at what other, uh, other changes she wanted to make to the ordinance, and maybe in, in six months, uh, we could apply those changes. Uh, it, but it would give the people that are, uh, doing it now and the ones that are, have invested money, it would give them turn, uh, time to recoup their, their investment and to make plans, at least for a year. And then all the things that that Katrina has mentioned, uh, could be developed into an ordinance, uh, in, within six months maybe. And as these places come up for renewal, uh, make the changes necessary at that time. So I'm in favor of a year extension from December, uh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Councilmember Rook.
So as long as Governor Inslee has an emergency in his state, this continues in the city of Big Harbor, is that correct?
Yeah, and Carl just brought up as well, something that I did not mention earlier, and that it, it, it's December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, or until ninety days after the statewide order is lifted. So that's the current, um, right now. It would be ninety days after the emergency is lifted.
I, I think this is a little early to, uh, make any changes to that.
But Councilmember, if, if your terrible wishes happen, then we, there's, there's no worry about extending this. So in the governor's, so, you know.
It's not my wish, but I'm
I know, I know, but so.
This thing has mutated every six months since it's gotten here.
Sounds like it's gonna probably work, you know, if we do six months and, and it's, uh, like I, Councilmember Heims, and I said six months, and this thing is still here. It's not gonna be six months. It's gonna be longer than that. So I, Councilmember Rook did mention it. It might, I might be premature because we're not proposing many, any changes at this time. Councilmember Heims.
I, I had a question on the area where we've received complaints. Has it been in warmer weather or cooler weather that we're getting these complaints, or is it, is weather, weather irrelevant?
It's, but I would say it's been more during warm weather.
Okay, so if we made it six months, we'd avoid a lot of warm weather, I assume. Made it five months, we'd make less warm weather. But it would be longer than December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
This doesn't end in December.
Pardon?
This does not end in December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Could end, okay, if Inslee would decide to do some things.
Well, it would be in Well, it would be in March then, because it goes on for three more months, right?
Okay, I, I was just trying to find out, is there an area where we could provide some degree of stability to the business owners saying, we're out there to some point without alienating a bunch of people who seem to be, uh, uh, suffering under this from noise and lights or whatever else is involved, okay? I'm, I'm looking for a, a place where, I'm looking for a win-win.
Well, one thing is, if we left it, if we, if we do our, if we break from the governor's rules, then if there are complaints and then we possibly have to defend something because we've broken from the governor's rules, then we're potentially liable, possibly, let's say if it's in a residential area. Whereas if we leave it as it is and follow the governor's rules, we actually avoid that conflict for the time being.
Yeah, and i- in speaking, Daniel couldn't be here with us today, but we do, again, need to, we need to provide a, a legal nexus and to why we are not having portions of our code be followed. Um, with that being said, the ordinance right now, again, is December thirty first of this year, or until ninety days after the emergency order is lifted, whichever is later. Um, staff would just recommend that if council's going to make an amendment to this ordinance, that it is tied somehow to the COVID pandemic, because this ordinance was passed due to the emergency order. As the legal nexus for doing so.
And I don't, if the governor do something, it's not gonna be like, well, this is gonna be next week. He's gonna, you know, he's gonna have a lot of other breweries and restaurants that are gonna complain, so he's gonna have to put his timeframe way out to give them a time to not have backlash. So and then there's three months more on top of that. I think, I think it'll give us the time to figure out what we want to do on our own mechanism down the road.
And I, I'm just gonna go out on a limb here, I'm gonna guarantee the governor's not gonna do that, because in addition to the virus, there's still the perception of the fear in people's heads, and we, we saw that in a lot of these emails. A lot of people feel that it's still scary to go out and sit inside of a thing, and that fear is gonna continue even after the virus is wiped out on this planet.
Well, especially if they talk to you.
Well, I know that. You know, do we want politicians that lie to us, or do we want politicians that tell us the truth?
I, I, I'm just gonna wait and see.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, I think we're in, we're still in this for a while.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Uh, okay, I think we're.
One, one quick question, Director Knutson, because I am concerned about, um, the folks that have been negatively impacted by this, either businesses with the parking or perhaps neighbors. Is there any recommendations you have that we could tweak this across the board that would help any of these folks out? So I think there's a few, but, but there are a few that have been negatively impacted, and to tell them it's gonna be another year is gonna be frustrating, I think, for some of them.
Yeah, it's, uh, unfortunately, because of how this was done, it was done due to the emergency for all this retail, um, or restaurant businesses. And again, that's because at the time, the nexus was they were the businesses that were most impacted, right? Um, you couldn't have regular occupancy of restaurants or retail businesses. Um, and so, no, this would need to be the, the broad, uh, as broad as it is now or, or not.
I hope we don't, I agree, I do, I am, I hope we don't lose a lot of small little businesses because of this too, because of.
I, I do have my hand up.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wanna reiterate, I think we should give it another year uh, to give the businesses that are, uh, currently doing it some stability and something they can plan on. And we could tie that, I'm thinking, since it has to be tied to the virus, uh, we can tie it to the fear of the virus. Uh, I think that is, uh, it's like Spencer said, the, uh, the fear is what keeps people from, uh, going out. So uh, I wanna push for at least a year, uh, with the community development, working on uh, rules, regulations that can, uh, get everybody happy.
Well, I hope you never tie anything to fear. I also, I think you, if you did a year, you, you would, you would close a lot of mom and pop businesses. And because in the summer, they may lose their parking that their people came, and I think the breweries would, the, the places would suffer if you've got a whole bunch of boarded up businesses that people can't get to. And, you know, I had a store twenty nine years, and parking for customers was what was one of the most vital things. So, and they usually didn't come to my store from going, uh, to restaurants or, uh, dining before. They was a destination store, so. Uh, but anyway, I think we're, I think we're good.
This is just to direct staff, so I think we should direct this discussion we're having. So I think we should discuss, uh, direct staff to, uh, develop some criteria of which, uh, we can keep this going beyond. And even if that means, uh, introducing some new, uh, specific regulations to, uh, certain businesses.
Mayor, I do, I think that what, what we could do to amend the ordinance, and again, that is if it's the will of the council, is to extend it until December thirty first of twenty twenty two. And again, that's if it's the council's will, and I think that could be tied to COVID. Again, if that's the council's will, then that's.
That's what I'd asked for a month or so ago, so we could start with that, and then we've got some time to think about it, and we can make amendments at the council meeting if, if folks have better ideas or ways to better protect, because I'm looking, I'm looking at this list, and I hear the parking concerns. I have not heard the parking concerns up until like maybe today, and I could see maybe one or two causing some parking issues, and maybe I'm wrong. Um, the ones downtown are mostly using their own property, so I don't really see how that's impacting parking for the other downtown businesses. So I guess I'd need to, to think about it more, but I'd like to start with the December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Very, like customers.
That's my intention as well.
I've heard, yes, we've heard that. Very few of my customers use the parking behind my store. You, I think if you go through a whole year, you better first send a email out to all the businesses, all kind, and tell them what you're gonna do. Because I think you're, I think you're alienating a lot of businesses if you do that. And I don't agree in awarding a few businesses at the sacrifice of thirty to forty other businesses. So if you wanna do this for the whole summer and a whole nother year, I think it's only fair to send the email out to all businesses and let them know what you're doing. Um, because I think you'd hear a lot of changes that, you know, you're gonna kill my parking.
I think that's a great idea, and if we could do that and, and get the feedback from the businesses.
We have time.
Well, let's, let's do that. I mean, and we can ask the Waterfront Alliance in the chamber, because we've heard from a lot of citizens who love the out, outdoor dining. Primarily, there's a couple that we've heard from that don't want this to continue, but we've only heard from a couple businesses.
And you have time. I mean, we already know that it's, it's gonna be probably six months, so you have time to send them to, uh, other businesses.
I don't really wanna take too much time, because they need, they need to be able to.
Sure, sure, but I'm not saying we don't have to rush. I, I'm saying we have the time to do this.
Yeah, I think so.
But I, I don't think we are rewarding businesses. I think we are allowing them to stay in business and allowing them to keep their.
And make the sacrifice of other businesses. That's what I wanna work out. I think we'll find out. Okay. All right, well, uh, we'll, we'll talk to staff of how we can actually do, and, and one thing we've heard from the public is they wanna, they wanna be able to have a say. That's what a lot of the, that's what, um, some of these, uh, dining places said is, is, you know, where's the public comment? So let's, let's make the public comment all businesses and not just the ones that this applies to, that, and the other ones that don't know about it.
Uh, point of clarification, th- this is supposed to be coming back, which would be relatively easy to do, modifying the ordinance and modifying the council bill. That was going to be kind of lickety-split, really easy. If we're talking about additional staff work, that's going to have to compile, um, addresses and send things out to businesses and, um, that, we will not be able to accomplish that in, uh, as fast of a fashion to get this turned around on to likely a November council meeting. So, um, wondering when the expectation of this coming back is from the council.
Well, would it be enough to just do an outreach to the Waterfront Alliance in the chamber and put it out on Facebook and get, you know, to not directly contact each, we're not directly counsels.
When I, when I talked to the Waterfront Alliance, they didn't realize that it was, they were pretty much, it acted like they were speaking for the restaurants and the larger places that, um, are being able to use this. But they, when they realized that this was act, gonna actually affect parking for other small businesses, um, they were not taking that in consideration when they first talked about it. So, and what about the strip up at Kimball, like I talked about? The, the place up there that has, you know, other store, other stores, and they're losing their parking up there? Yes.
I would just point out that the Heritage has had a thing out on Facebook for at least a day, and we've all received probably four or five dozen emails from concerned citizens. I think that if there were businesses out there that feel that strongly, we would have heard from them by now within this context. Uh, I mean, this is not a new issue. Uh, it's an issue that's been going on for a while. And I think a lot of the businesses that you're probably talking about, you know, understand that we're in different times, and so, you know, perceptions have changed. Now, like I said, I'm not in favor of allowing this to go on forever, and, you know, once the virus is over, we go back to the way we were, because again, we're not, we're not here to gift, uh, parking spots and, and sidewalks to businesses. Those are the cities, and, you know, the cit, the, the business owner should understand that what they bought is what they've got, and they're not getting anything new, but they will get this extension and this opportunity for now. So.
You are, you are choosing, you're picking and choosing who to reward and who not.
Well, I'm not, the governor is, but we are allowing the businesses that are being forced under this thing to have, at least like Lee says, you know, uh, an understanding of where they're at, where they stand, and what they can plan and prepare for. And I think that's fair. And again, couple, you know, tempered with the fact that keeping the knowledge, this isn't gonna last forever. It's only an emergency thing. As long as the emergency's in place, it's good. Soon as the emergency's over, it's done. I think that's fair, and I think that's what the public, you know, has in their mind as far as fairness expectations. Because a lot of the business owners that are probably getting, losing parking stalls and sidewalk space are also going to Heritage or Seven Seas or the Tides or more so, and enjoying these opportunities, so.
So what do you tell the eye doctor that has, um?
I would say, reach out and talk to us.
What do you tell the eye doctor that has like thirty to forty parking spaces around him occupied by two, two businesses, and mostly, mostly for their employees?
I would say, speak up and speak out so that we can hear those.
But you're saying you don't wanna give them a chance to do that.
I didn't say that. I'm saying, I wanna hear from you and allow me to make that decision, but right now I'm not hearing from them, so I don't feel that they feel that it's important.
So you're saying that they should have already known? I suppose they don't know.
Well, then they're not paying attention, and I don't think they're, I think they do know, because it's their business.
I think yours, when I had my store, a lot of people, you, you.
You weren't in a pandemic.
I don't think that, um, assuming that they should already know, I don't think is, that is true.
I'm not saying this, I'm not assuming that they should already know, but there's been enough time out there that I'm sure they're, they're aware of this conversation's taking place.
I'll, I'll do a side bet later on with you.
Okay, five dollars.
If we're gonna continue to follow what the governor is doing, what the state is doing, why do we have to change this language at all? If it's gonna end ninety days after the emergency ends, why can't it just stay that? If everyone already knows that it's gonna end ninety days after the state of emergency is lifted, then why do we have to change it? If we're following the governor and everything he's doing, and we're not gonna deviate from what he's doing.
Silence.
I have my hand up. Can you hear me?
Councilmember Rothenberg, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Rothenberg, raise your hand, just your hand up in the air if you can hear me. Okay, he can, he can hear me.
Can you hear me?
We have an internet fail for the moment, Councilmember Rothenberg, so we, we paused the meeting, um, because no one. So the meetings paused, we're trying to reconnect to Hollywood. Okay, it looks like we're back.
Can I be heard?
Councilmember Rothenberg, can you hear me now?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we're back in business.
Okay, Dan. I don't know where we, I don't know where we lost it, who the last person speaking was, but I ha, I do have a comment.
I don't think it was very far back, so um, Josh is pretty much on top of it, so we'll wait for two councilmembers to come back.
Councilmember Rothenberg, does this sound a little bit better?
Yes, sounds good. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. So I don't know where we left, but I do have a comment, uh, when we're ready.
Okay, we're adjourned for the moment. As soon as everyone comes back, we'll restart.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Session. Okay, the city council study session of October twenty sixth is back in session. We did stop because there was a internet click. So, um, we stopped communicating until everyone was back. Uh, one thing I think as council, uh, Katrina Knutson mentioned from our attorney is before we deviate from the state, we have to find out what the repercussions would be. So I think we need to have this come back at another study session with hearing from our attorney so that if we do change it from what the state has, because right now we're protected in the state, if we do change it from what the state has, we know what ramifications we have to adhere to to legally and responsibly be okay with. Uh, liability and any concerns. Uh, go ahead, come, go ahead Katrina.
I do think that depending on what council decides that they would like to be considered, I think running it past legal would be beneficial. And again, that is because of the, how this was um, done under the emergency for COVID. So has, how, what I did mention again is that this, this action, because it does give. Um, a temporary suspension of a larger portion of our land use regulations. It does have to be tied to something. And again, that has been the emergency order for, for COVID. Again, Daniel did approve the, the December thirty first or ninety days after the governor's order. But, you know, if we're going to talk about something. Further than that, I do think we need to check with, with Daniel, just to ensure that we're not putting something forward to our citizens. Um, maybe getting people's hopes up or getting them angry if it's something that legally we can't consider. So I do think it would be good to check with Daniel, again, depending on what the, the direction from council is today.
And I think we would, we would have Daniel, we would hear that from Daniel too. We would have him at that meeting. So if council had any questions, we don't have to get back to you. You would hear it straight from Daniel. And so would everyone else.
It, it would be good to know mayor, um, from the council that is, all the councils here, but you know, if the direction is to go to the December twenty. Twenty-two, um, or if there's not support for that, just so that we can plan workload wise.
Okay, we can each um, say that so we can have some consensus. But first, councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I was uh, just gonna mention that if, if we just extended thirty days past the governor's. Mandating ended, then we only have, was it thirty or ninety days? Then we only have ninety days. And I'm curious if any of the merchants wanted to make this permanent, what's the turnaround? Uh, for something like permit review time and something to get their. Themselves legalized, so to speak, uh, to have their outdoor. Think, could we do it that quickly?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Rodenberg. And it would depend again on. Uh, which business we're talking about, but my department's more than happy to reach out to those that are currently utilizing this. And let them know, you know, meet with them and talk about the process for. You know, for coming in for this to be permanent through, through the established process, not through the temporary provisions.
I do know that this is an emergency thing. Maybe there's something we could do to, uh, under an emergency. Uh, caused by the mayor, maybe there's something we could do to expedite those permit requests.
That is something that we can definitely look into expediting review of those requests. Um, that's something that I can talk to Daniel about and see based on. Um, on COVID, if we could, if we could do that, um, and we can get back to you on that. But typically for site plan review process right now, um, we're usually getting those um, completed within ninety days. There are again, certain circumstances where those can take longer. So, uh, just for your information, but we'll get, I, we can check with legal about the, the expedited review.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you a minute ago. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Councilmember Woo.
Oh, thank you. Listening to Katrina, listening to Councilmember Markley. Uh, and the issue with Daniel, I'd like to bring this back to another work session when Daniel can be there. I think that's the appropriate way to handle that.
And go ahead, Councilmember Denson.
Well, I'd be very interested in knowing what Daniel thinks about the legality of going out of a year as we talked about, or perhaps. Sticking with what we've got here, but maybe extending that period beyond COVID by an additional thirty days, so a hundred and twenty days, just so the businesses. If they think that they can get a, a regular site plan review and get the permit for it to be permanent, they've got a little bit extra time to. To do their plans, their engineering or whatever, and work through the city. So I'd love to know the op, those two options from Daniel. I don't know why we need to have another study session though. Can't we propose one of these? And bring it forward for first reading to get this moving?
Well, first thing.
Here from the public?
Well, first thing, I, I wasn't clear of what you said. You said extended the ninety days plus one month, but then you said a hundred and twenty days.
Right. So the, the two options I see that we've discussed today is extending the whole thing until December thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. Moving the whole year, where the second option would be what we have here, um, with the, the ordinance ending this year. Um, December thirty first, two thousand twenty-one, or when the COVID emergency is over plus a hundred and twenty days. So just moving ninety to a hundred and twenty days to give an extra month for businesses to pursue, to either pursue permanency. Or to have those four months to wrap up their operations and tell their customers, we are no longer going to be in the parking lot, which is going to be true for the ones operating in the parking lot. So they've got a little bit, just a little bit more time.
Okay, but question, it doesn't extend, as far as I know, it doesn't extend the end of this year anyway. Because the, until it's ninety days past with the governors, that, that date's already gone.
Right, that, that's just what it would say. It would, the only change would be changing ninety to a hundred and twenty.
Okay, so either, either the end of December twenty twenty-two or one extra month and the governor a hundred and twenty days. Okay, I think those are good options to.
Good to know the legality, but I don't know that we need to have another study session. I think we can talk about this in a council meeting.
Oh, I would really like to have a study session with Daniel here. I don't know how any of the council members feel about it.
I think we'll have, we could, wouldn't it be a separate one? We can add it on. Unfortunately, we have enough study sessions. I think we can add it on to something. Um, or we can have a.
Doesn't have to be a separate study session, absolutely not, but some, something without the council that we can talk to Daniel.
At the next council meeting or the one after that at it, have the discussion as an agenda item?
Um, let's, let's look at, let's talk to Daniel and see, um, and look at our schedule and we can weigh all those three options. Just, uh, it just does a whole statement that Daniel can send out to us, including, including others. Or if it's at a council, or if it's a study session with other things.
Yeah, there, there's really, um, there's three options as I see it to move forward. One would be to do the work session where then we would evaluate the three options that Councilmember Denson. Um, discussed and I added a third, which was no change. You know, staying status quo or the hundred and twenty days or December twenty-second, and we could do pro con and legal analysis of those at a work session. Uh, the second option would be if there's a majority of council today that um. Agrees on a path forward, then you could direct staff to bring that back in an ordinance at an upcoming meeting. Or the third, I believe any council member can ask for anything to be on the agenda. That would not be an actionable item, however. Because there would not be an ordinance, but I believe the council could discuss this at a meeting, whether or not you want to do that at a full council meeting or a work session would be up to you.
I think we give those three options uh, to Daniel and then we figure out either leave it as it is, do a hundred and twenty days or the end of twenty-two. Um, and then figure out what the best format to come back with council.
You mean, so wait to hear from Daniel before we decide on a study session or council meeting?
So I. We have a big elephant in the room here, as far as I'm concerned. We have a big elephant. They're called the neighbors, the neighbors. The neighbors and whatever we do, the neighbors must be preserved and protected. You know, as I go out and talk to people in Gig Harbor North, they tell me there's a lot of pop, pop, pop noise here. From the sportsman's club. And I like to see that noise go away. And I tell those folks that, that the sportsman's club was there first. And the neighbors, the neighbors on Harborview Drive were there first. And whatever we do, for goodness sakes, that neighborhood and those neighbors. Need to be valued and they need to be preserved and their lives do not be, do not need to be. Uh, their quality of life does not need to be lessened. So whatever we do, please, let's keep that neighbors on our mind.
I definitely feel for the neighbors as well, which is why I asked Director Knutson if there was anything we could do across the board to help mitigate that. So I'm, I don't want to drag this on. So I'm wondering, I'm kind of sensing that there's enough support from this group. Maybe to go with that a hundred and twenty day option? And if there's a, as, as a minimum, so we could move forward with a council bill at the next council meeting, just changing ninety to a hundred and twenty days. But, and then we have something to talk about. And then if we want to come back, somebody wants to come back with an amendment, moving it a whole nother year, we can do that. But at least we can move this forward. And at that council meeting, if we could also have Daniel there and he can speak to, if somebody does propose, we want a whole year. To December two thousand twenty-two, Daniel can give us his arguments, why or why that may not be appropriate. So do we have agreement that we can move forward with a hundred and twenty days? So at least get something on the agenda? And we can reach out to businesses on our own. I'm happy to do that because I want to know from them too, the other businesses.
That sounds fine to me.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Hey, I'm down.
Are you over there? Do you want to move it forward towards have council prepare?
I'm not on board.
Okay. Can you speak a little louder just for the, okay?
Well, I, I would like to hear what. Daniel has to say, I. I mean, yeah, I could, I could go either way, you know, I mean. Right now it's ninety days after the governor's emergency order goes off the table. So. Adding an extra month to it, really, I don't have a big problem with that. Um, but I would like to at least clarify that with.
Uh, Councilmember Markley?
I don't have a problem with the hundred and twenty days either, but um. And I, and I think the benefit of putting it on a council meeting is we open it up for public comment. And we have the public process. I, I think I know why Councilmember Woo wants a study session and I kind of agree with that too. But there's no public comment at the study session and so I don't, I don't know that. I think if we, I think we do need to move forward for the sake, sake of everybody involved. So. And if Daniel can give his advice, you know, ahead of that council meeting or at the council meeting, you know, whatever he needs to, to do. But I wholeheartedly agree about taking these neighbors into consideration. I can't imagine telling some of these folks. They're going to deal with this for another year with no solutions to the current problem. I, that's not fair. It's not fair. So I think we need to incorporate those, those things into that council meeting bill. Talk about those, the neighbors and the, and the complaints about the noise and the parking and things like that. Because I agree, I don't think their quality of life should be, continue to be disturbed. And I also will agree that we should not govern out of fear, ever. So this is not a good, smart way to govern. So I would support moving it to a council meeting agenda so that we can have public comment. And I don't mind the hundred and twenty days. I think that. Four months is a, is a good amount of time.
Okay, so Katrina, um, go ahead and prepare it for a council meeting, talk to Daniel. Um, have him, uh, inform us what it would be to do it a hundred and twenty days. And council can decide at that council meeting, but um, we'll go with rationale of a hundred and twenty days, one month longer than the governor. But again, uh, we're not deciding anything here. It's up for the, um, vote at that council meeting. I would like Daniel to, we all would like Daniel to give us the information in the packet. When it goes out at the council meeting, so the public and the council and everyone can actually hear from the attorney. In, in the council bill, so that it's already there ahead of time. I will still hear from at the meeting, but everyone will have time to look at that ahead of time.
Um, Mayor, thank you for that. The, Daniel will need to sign off on the council bill. So if Daniel signs off on the council bill, it's received legal blessing.
Right.
So I don't think there would need to be a legal analysis of the hundred and twenty days. If he signs on to it, then. Um, it would meet the, the nexus, the legal nexus requirement for, for moving that forward. But we can definitely include, include discussion in there about the, the nexus between. Um, the hundred and twenty days being the site plan, um, could be a, a maximum site plan review timeline for, for businesses. So I think that we could do that, but I, I do. Again, just for the record, if anybody's listening for, to Councilmember Woo's point, bringing this to a council meeting does allow for public comment.
Yep.
Uh, public hearing because of an ordinance. And so, um, the council is not making a decision today. It's just forwarding it on.
Right. And I also want council, I want Daniel to, there were, there were some council that wanted it longer, you know, the whole year. So I want Daniel to be prepared to let us know the repercussions on things like that as well.
Make sure that that happens.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Last.
Just, just so I'm clear on this, if we go out beyond the governor's declaration.
Can you talk more into that so everyone can hear you?
If, if, if we go.
Pull it closer.
I'm sorry.
Pull the microphone closer so every, the public can hear.
Whoa, swallow the microphone. Um, anyway, uh, if, if we go out beyond the, the, the state authorized. Point, okay? Are we going out into uncharted territory? We are now violating our own code.
That's what Daniel's going to tell us. That's every, that's.
That's a no brainer.
Daniel's, Daniel's going to tell us the, you know, where, what type of waters we're going to be treading.
We would like, we would like to give our businesses as much time as possible to prepare for this to end. But in reality, we don't know, no one knows when this is going to end. So. There will be, there will be, but um. We, we definitely need to hear from Daniel on all, all of these things. And so. I agree with Councilmember Heinz. We don't want to be in violation of our own code and get in trouble. So. If we can, if our intent is to give our businesses as much time as possible, that's our, that's our heart, of course, and that's our intent. If we can't do that, because legally we'll be in trouble, well, then we can't do that. And everyone's gonna, it's just gonna end when it's gonna end. And people are going to have to be prepared for that.
Right, if Daniel's.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, Daniel says that's not going to work, then we're not going to have, have him prepare something that we're in jeopardy. We're going to follow our legal advice.
Right. And we also do want to encourage businesses to be prepared for the future. And if they can get site plan review and get something permanent that works for the community, for the neighbors. For, for their business, that's the best possible solution, because those are following our own rules.
So whatever, if the four work, four months works with legal, yes. If it doesn't work, don't tell Daniel. Prepare some, don't have them prepare something that's going to put us in a legal situation.
Maybe, maybe the city of Gig Harbor could have its own emergency declaration to extend it.
Okay, so I told Katrina we would get this done at like five or five thirty and that was a while ago. So we, our last topic is UGA. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make this very, very short. Tony gave the update regarding the, the work that we've done with Pierce County and SEPA. We have an additional meeting, the mayor, uh, city administrator and myself with the Pierce County Executive. And the director of planning and public works with Pierce County, either tomorrow or the day after, can't remember now. But um, that made, that meeting, the main point was supposed to be talking about SEPA. At their, and their misapplication. However, we're going to pivot a little bit and talk about. We will mention that, but also talk about um, joint UGA planning and uh, the urban growth area management agreement that we've been wanting to initiate in that process. So, uh, we just wanted to give council a quick heads up that that work is um, moving along. And we're um, hopeful that we can get um, UGAMA, that's what the acronym is. Uh, Urban Growth Area Management Agreement in for, um, for a number of reasons, but you know, who's going to. What standards is UGA going to be uh, reviewed under? Are we going to be able to collect TIF fees through SEPA? For projects that utilize city roads. Those are all things that can be worked out in that process. And so we're really um, hopeful that this process will take off from this meeting. And we will keep council apprised.
And I might say that the letter that um, our planning department, Katrina, probably Carl, maybe Kim, all three of them. Put together that then I sent on to the govern, to Bruce, um, Dan Meyer. It, and then following up because we didn't get an answer, it got a lot of traction. It really did. And they've changed um, their policies going forward. They're going to review things that are already in the pipeline. And they said, so we don't need the meeting then this week, right? And then we said, no, we still want that meeting. We're not, we're not going to let it go that way. So we're gonna, we're gonna hold on to it. And they actually are having two or three other people at the meeting. And they actually are having two or three other people at the meeting. So we're going to build from it and try to make sure we get our trips that we needed and a little bit more code work in our UGA. So we're not, not letting this go away. And after I'm, after I'm gone, I would suggest doing this every two to three months with Pierce County to keep them on their toes. Yes, yes, councilmember Francis.
So the, this update was just about those two specific things. It wasn't about the UGA annexation study. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
However, that will be coming to council, uh, either late this year or early next year, the UGA analysis. It's gonna, it's going through the planning commission now.
I don't want to go any further. I know everyone's tired, but what question I had before, which you can answer maybe offline, is how, when we do annex properties in our UGA, how does that affect that capacity number that we have? That was what was scaring me.
When we annex properties from the UGA into the city, the existing, any existing development comes in, so we gain the people, but we also take the capacity. So if there's population capacity that's associated with the area that we're taking in, you know, the real people go and also the, 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 the future people.
Double edged. Double edged sword. Yeah. Okay, if there's a, do I have a motion to adjourn? I was a favor say hi.
Hi.